Welcome to the December 14th, 2022, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order, and we do have a quorum present. Everybody's here today. Our first item of business is to review the consent agenda. Just want to mention that we do have a revised list of staff comments regarding Item 3G on the consent agenda. So if any motion we make will need to be, when we reference staff comments, we'd also need to include the revised comments we're looking at here on our desk. But we've all had a chance to review them ahead of time. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to have removed for any further discussion?
The R and I'll move for approval.
Second.
And second to all staff comments, including the revised comments on our desk. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have our GDO items. So first item up on the agenda there is the Notes Live. It is final design review and site plan review of 44,601 square foot outdoor amphitheater, restaurant, and indoor music venue on 20 acres, zoned MU and GDO3, located along Medical Center Parkway and Gateway Boulevard. Notes Live is the developer. Mr. Barbie, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. As you stated, this is the final design review for Notes Live, located on Medical Center Parkway, just across from St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital and just to the west of Murfreesboro Fire Station 6. Access for the property is provided through three entrance and exit points. One located centrally along Medical Center Parkway. Another one will be on the west side of the property along Gateway Boulevard. And the third one will be on the east side of the property, facing Fire Station Number 6. Parking, the approach for parking for the facility has been pretty conservative. We have parked and created parking requirements and reviewed and provided parking for a maxed-out event for all three portions, meaning that the Bourbon Brothers Restaurant, which seats about 300, the Notes Live Boot Barn section to the east of Bourbon Brothers, we've seated it at about 1,100, and then approximately 4,500 for the actual amphitheater section itself. We have seen, we have done parking tabulations for a maxed-out event, which will only happen about 15 to 20 times a year. But this kind of gets that Black Friday event where everybody shows up for everything on all three venues. Site landscaping meets all of our standard practices. They have streetscape plantings along Medical Center Parkway and Gateway Boulevard. They have their standard perimeter plantings around the entire perimeter of the property. The parking areas, there is a large parking area on the south side of the property. And we'll see if something gives a little better description. There we go. There's a large parking lot here, a large parking lot here. All of those are broken up with a standard landscape islands, canopy trees, things like that, so you don't have the aesthetic of a large ocean of asphalt. That also provides canopy cover, shade for those areas to help fight the heat island effect, and also have some stormwater benefits as well as far as absorbing rainwater as it falls. In addition to those, the main buildings here and here all have your standard base of building landscaping, and that provides the softer transition between your sidewalks, parking areas, to the actual structures that are constructed. The amphitheater itself has been purposely oriented to face the Stones River and away from Ascension St. Thomas Hospital, which is on the property here, and Stones River subdivision, which is a little bit further to the east past the fountains. And again, that was done purposely to block both the visual impact of the largest parking lot, people coming and going, as well as any impacts from sound, visual impacts as well. There's a little better overview that shows the landscape plan, and you can see the multiple layers of planting materials that go into the site design to help, like I said, visually screen and then break up both asphalt areas and the interior sections of the facility. I'm here for any questions you may have. I believe Mr. Bob Mudd of Notes Live is here as well today, as well as Matt Taylor from SEC. I believe, is there also someone here from Kemley Horn? Yep, we also have a gentleman here from Kemley Horn as well, who performed the traffic impact study. And again, I'm here if you have any questions as well.
So, speaking of traffic, you've got a 4,500 seating area. Don't know exactly, without looking at it, I can't tell, but parking places. Just curious, will the lights, the traffic lights be different way, as to way they allow people to leave after an event? Or is that even possible?
Good afternoon. Matt Taylor of SEC. We are going to work with staff to come up with what we would call a game day management plan. And so some of our entrances may be one-way, like you can only turn left or only turn right. The signals will likely go on flash during an exit time period. I think the entering will operate very similar, because we expect people to trickle in more. But we're going to work on that. We'll have that in place prior to any sort of C of O. So before it's ever operational, we'll know what we're doing there.
Yes, so I've been, probably several people in here have been to the First Bank Amphitheater.
Yes, sir.
It's not the easiest place to get out of. And so I think we want to make sure that, it looks like you've got three exits, they don't have three exits. But that can be problematic, trying to get at least out of there, so.
Yes, sir. I think that that is, I believe we used to have a plan director said we needed good examples of bad examples, and so I think we've all been gauging that as where we don't want to be. And so with our multiple ways in and out, it leaves us a lot of options on how to disperse our traffic here, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And what we're looking at here, there's two, the two exterior sides are going to have actual traffic lights, or maybe one, I'm sorry, there. Not three, all three of them do not have traffic lights.
Correct. We're going to do a, there's an existing signal here, and then there will be a brand-new signal here, and that's the far entrance of the fountains, what I call the far entrance, the town side of the fountains. That's always been anticipated to have a signal there. You can see how they've striped it, they've had some temporary channelization out there, and so we'll be modifying that. We're going to build that signal in anticipation of the city's widening of Medical Center Parkway as well, so that the city doesn't have to come in immediately behind us and move that signal pole. So we're going to work with the city on that and have that coordinated as well.
And do we feel like the, when we talk about the anticipated widening of Medical Center Parkway to the eventual six lanes, well, is that going to be something that's going to have happened by the time this opens? Or is that a longer-term project? I'm not sure if you know the answer to that question. Ah, yes. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Glad to, glad to be here. That project's actually scheduled to start the end of 2023, and should take about a year and a half to two years to complete. We are looking at the possibilities of, there's a median in there specifically that, right in front of the development, we may look at, because we think that'll, could possibly affect their ingress egress, and so we may try to move that up a little bit on the schedule and try to have that done before the facility itself opens.
Okay. But you're comfortable with everything that's outlined in the traffic study and what, you know, everything that's planned for this as of now, you feel good about and feel like that we have a good plan for getting traffic in and out of this, even in the game day type, as they refer to, that's only 10 or 15 times a year?
Sure, I do, I do. I think they've really looked at it, they've, they've added some improvements. Of course, the city has, has added some improvements as well. We plan on having the back connection from Gateway Boulevard over to Robert Rose. It's not really shown on here, but kind of out of the roundabout there, and it goes back over to Robert Rose. That'll be completed before this facility's open. That construction should start the first of next year. And then, of course, our really, you know, we did an analysis, Kemley Horn also did an analysis for us just on the capacity of Medical Center Parkway itself, and it showed that it had the capacity as is to handle the traffic. So we think really the additional lane in each direction is going to give us some, some additional capacity.
Okay.
And of course, most of our, you know, if, most of our problems occur on a more regular basis down in front of the avenues and in that commercial area, so we feel good about this, this location.
Okay. What other questions or concerns anybody have on, on this site? Anything regarding the traffic we want to specifically, does anybody feel good about that?
Yeah, I think a lot of the changes that have been made are addressing most of the concerns that I had, which is the hospital, the noise, the traffic. I don't have a ton more questions regarding, related to that. Only one, and that would be more related to, not the development, but the operation. Well, how are we, are we planning on having multiple officers out to direct the traffic? What's our plan on that?
So that, that will be part of that game day plan. We do anticipate having officers, I don't know how many yet, we may have three, may have four. That'll be, all will be vetted between, our consultant, Kemley Horn, will put that together for us, and they will also, will work with city traffic staff. I'm sure the police department will be involved in that discussion as well. So don't know exactly how many, but we will have officers there.
Okay.
And I would say as many as necessary.
More than anything. Also, if you don't mind, Mr. Taylor or Mr. Mudd, whoever would like to, I'd like just to have some, have you all kind of review this, the sound issue, and mainly regarding the concerns that we know the hospital has. Just want to make sure we have on the record exactly what we think, what we know is going to happen, and that we feel good about that, and that it does address the concerns that they've had. I know it's something about the 65 decibels is what it'll be when it gets to the hospital, but you know, I have no idea what 65 decibels is. So just, just to make sure it is what's
Yes, ma'am.
Going to still allow our hospital to operate as it needs to.
Yes, ma'am. I'll probably let Mr. Mudd address that a little more specifically. He's a little more familiar with the, those terms.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Planning Commission, Ms. Jones, thank you for the opportunity. And I'll share kind of a broad overview of the sound implications and the work that we have done, and then I'll share with you some of the conversations that I have had with the hospital and the commitments that we've made there as well.
Thank you.
When we did the initial sound study, it was based on a site plan that actually had the amphitheater more back towards Medical Center Parkway, and the Bourbon Brothers Smokehouse and Tavern and the Boot Barn Hall kind of running in parallel to it. But we've, even since then, we've done two substantial changes. One, we've moved it forward, which further positions Bourbon Brothers Smokehouse and Tavern and Boot Barn Hall between the back of stage and the directional towards the hospital. And we've also added an 18-foot wall to the back of the stage. Jeff, what's the height of that wall? It's 14 feet?
We'll, actually, around 14, 16. We have a
Which is an additional barrier to the
To the back of the stage, okay. I heard about the wall, but I wasn't sure where the wall, was it on the back of the grass area or the back of the, back of the stage?
It'll wrap the back of the stage. And the ordinances are 65 and 60 till about 10, so till 10:00 PM it's 65 after it's 60. And, you know, I wish I could have put this up, but the, the equivalent of that, just to give you a sense, based on the standards, let me pull it up here, is like a full Walmart or walking on a sidewalk next to a two-lane road. And so that would be, what was anticipated was 61 dB at the, at the hospital. So I've discussed this sound study with the hospital. There are really three ways that, in an environment like this, that you, you control sound. The first is physical mitigation, hence the changes that we've made. The second is what's called electroacoustic mitigation, and we are going to mandate that. That's done at the time that you book and act. And there are really two simple things that you do. One, you only allow the speakers to be up 40 feet. And two, you arrange them in an array so that they're pointed down towards the audience. And the third component of that is you use what's called a delay cluster, which is an expense that we're going to undertake, whereby we serve the green, the back of the amphitheater, with a separate set of speakers, so you're not relying on the horsepower coming off the stage to serve the people in the back. When you look at the footprint of sound, your real concern is your high decibel, because it is very directional, your low decibels are going to spread more evenly, hence the, the physical barriers that are put into place. The third piece, and this is, I think, what's most important, is operational controls. And so I talked to the COO of the hospital yesterday, we had also a substantial meeting back on August the 3rd, and we offered putting sound detection devices at their facility, which are small devices that would not be intrusive, and it would give us information if there were to be a noise emitence, because it can be, it can be impacted by humidity, by sound, and so, so many other areas, that it would allow us to take an operational approach to bringing the noise level down. And I, it's not in our contract, but it's a, it's a commitment to our neighbor that I have made to Roddy and the team.
Okay, so you'll have the equipment at the hospital that will measure the sound there, and it will relay back to somebody on site that would be responsible for adjusting the noise level?
That is correct. And that is a very traditional practice for outdoor, sounds like this, where you have noise-sensitive zones, and so we're, we're going to commit to doing that. But we'll have those sound detection devices at our property perimeter, and the signs will allow us to make reasonable operational controlling efforts, but we would be open to putting one over there that would inform our systems for operational controls as well.
Hello, Edwin. I'm Jeff Crocker. I'm the chief architect on the project. This little blue box, and this is what Bob was referring to, our stage component, and I'm trying to draw on the screen, so I apologize for that, our stage is essentially right in that crosshair.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm going to go up here to the top of the screen. One thing that we've done since the last design that, in order to help mitigate some of this concern, is we've taken our, what we call our artist compound and back-of-house structures, and we have, sorry, this is the stage that the crosshair is on underneath. We've essentially extended our buildings out and turned them on an angle as well, and extended the height of the walls up to help mitigate some of that sound. So I wanted to just bring that to your attention in particular as well.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
And those two additional physical mitigations were not considered in the original study that produced a 61 dB, which is in, in that range.
Okay.
From a code perspective. Any questions on that?
I appreciate that very much. Just want to make sure, we're excited about this, but we want to make sure it's a
I'll reiterate to the Planning Commission too. I've told them, we would, we are not going to, we are not going to be, we're not going to have the challenges that we had in Franklin, or we wouldn't come here. We have to, you know, we have to convince ourselves we're going to drain in 30 to 40 minutes, or, or you're not going to have full shows 30 to 40 times a year. The second piece is, we want to have nothing but positive impact on what happens across the street. I mean, that is a, that is a, an asset of this community that we will want to support and encourage and do nothing less, and so we'll answer every phone call that comes from the hospital, whether there are opportunities to adjust our business plans or to, to partner, which I think there's some opportunity to. We're going to have the better part of 900 parking spaces that get used 30 times a year. So.
And some, and that off-site parking?
Yeah, so the, we did, in addition to the traffic study that has been discussed here, I went ahead and looked at a parking, and started a parking study. Typically, that's something we would do, you know, down the road a little bit. We went ahead and did it. Ultimately, if you had this facility completely full, 4,500 people, you had Boot Barn Hall at 900, which we would never do, we're going to have it down at 500, because that's the way that it's table-seated, and you had an 8,000 restaurant that was full of people, we would need 1,345 parking spots. So we had to secure additional parking spots, and we have multiple options there, but I wanted to come here with the confidence of agreement. And we've established a letter of intent for 500 spots at Murfreesboro Medical Center, which their COO, I think, is here, and talked through what that would look like. We would end up using 50 Persinger Mercedes vans to move people back and forth if that were necessary. We also have multiple other options that we're in discussions with, but we haven't codified those yet.
Okay. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Any other questions or concerns? Other than exciting? Okay.
And I'll move that we approve of such comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all very much. Appreciate all the hard work and working with all our neighbors to get to this point. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is Metal Lark, a master plan and initial design review of 77 townhouse dwellings and 27 single-family detached dwellings on 10.8 acres, zoned PRD, GDO1 and GDO2, along Willow Oak Trail and Wilkinson Pike. Toll Southeast LP Company, Inc. is the developer. Ms. Green, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Thank you. Our next item on the gateway portion of our agenda is for you to consider initial design review for a new development in Murfreesboro. You may know this project as Toll Brothers at the Gateway. Since the rezoning process, they've gone through a study and are now naming the project Metal Lark, which I think is probably a much more poetic name, but just to link those two projects in your brain, I just wanted you to know that they're the same. This is a master plan, a masquerading plan and initial design review today, which means the focus will be on architecture that they're presenting to you. This project is bounded by Wilkinson Pike along the north, and Willow Oak Trail will extend along its southern boundary. Similar to those streets, the project is divided into two phases. The phase is one is on the north side, so extending from Wilkinson Pike down. And Phase Two is the portion of the development that will be on Willow Oak Trail. The PRD that this property was rezoned to allows the property to be developed with 77 townhomes and 27 single-family detached homes on the property. And that is not typically a use that is permitted in Gateway Design Overlay District. When it was first envisioned, townhomes weren't a part of that vision, so some of the code ordinances we have isn't written specifically to townhomes, since that wasn't a part of the original plan. So when we talk about architecture, I'll go through that in just a moment. Another part of the PRD zoning was to request an exception to that Wilkinson Pike buffer that is required in the zoning ordinance, the same ask that Clary Park got, they asked here. So there's a 100-foot buffer that runs along the south side of Wilkinson Pike. It doesn't allow structures, parking, to be located in that, in that area. The Clary Park development and its development both allow in 20 feet of that buffer to have single-family detached homes in them. And then, let's see if I can, I can ignore it. And then a berm and buffer to be constructed in the same kind of fashion as was in Clary Park. Battlefield is to the northeast of the property. The program book did provide some specific design standards for this development, requiring foundation landscaping, sodded yards, amenities that are in the development are being committed to being installed with each phase of development. So since there are two phases, the, and I think the amenities in each phase are required to be installed, and sometimes that's a conversation that Planning Commission likes to have, timing of those amenities. I think also this was a project where we heard feedback that the formal open space, the parks and the open spaces providing this were an example of what works, and so sometimes we ask people, where people ask us for good examples of good examples, I didn't want to refer, and this might be one of them when it's constructed. I know on paper it worked, so we think it'll look good in the field. The, I mentioned that the site will be divided in two phases. The north side is Phase One, the south side is Phase Two. Townhomes, of course, consist of buildings, and each building has several dwelling units in it. So here, they range from like five to seven dwelling units. So the building though, is all five or all seven units in that building. And so the, the single-family homes, you can see, Phase One here, and then there's some single-family homes here. What's in the middle are the townhomes. And so I've got several material boards I want to show, show you today. I mentioned that the gateway wasn't written for townhomes, and more specifically, what I'm referring to is architecture standards. We require specific drawings of all four sides of buildings, color elevations, color renderings, exact fenestrations, materials, roof materials, specs of height, the type of glass, all those details to be thought through at the planning phase, and so that's this initial and final design review. The applicants, of course, are dividing this in two phases, getting approval for the entire site plan with this project, but only getting approval for Phase One of the buildings. Because the buildings are slightly tailored based on who's coming, they want to have some flexibility to tweak designs or color, colors more than design. They'll all fit within the PRD, but they don't have all the buildings, all four sides, designed today. And so there are many, many pages in the book, and you've probably already seen that as you went through your materials, that, and I'll skip probably past the black and whites just because color is more interesting. And they show the variation of buildings, the front sides and rear, and what they could be with the, the actual mix may vary when they development, when they develop it. There are some commitments that are going to remain part of it, and it's that townhome buildings are comprised of alternating unit styles and unit colors, so the same color and style cannot be next to each other. Each unit shall be set, shall be offset from adjoining units by 24 inches. Roof lines are varied between each unit, with jogs in buildings, with a minimum of six inches of vertical step in the building. The first floor elevations are at least 18 inches above the sidewalk along its frontage, has usable porches and stoops that are at least five by nine. High-visibility homes facing internal private streets have wrapped porches, full brick sides, and extra windows and details. High-visibility homes facing Clary Park have full brick sides and the extra windows and details. They've located the HVACs in the back, and these are alley-loaded units. The zoning, there was also some conversation about addressing the units, emergency services. Some of the concern was the fronts face mews, which are just little open spaces, and the backs face the alley, wanting to make sure that the fire department can get to the buildings appropriately. So they are numbering the back of the units, and as they've said, man doors will be required in a single-family detached, but the fire department indicated they'd be able to serve the single-family attached, which is townhomes. I'm going to ask the team to come up and talk about the project a little bit more. While they're doing that, I'll pass around the several material boards. All the materials that will be used on this board, so when we ask for flexibility, we're not saying something different can be done, but just the, the shuffling of the building, of the units within the buildings. So the building of five or seven units, shuffling of the units within the building is what they're asking for. So I'll go ahead and have the team come up, and I'll pass around the boards.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Matt Taylor of SEC. I've also got Mr. Michael Burton of Toll Brothers here with me as well. Margaret Ann did a good job explaining that. I did want to go into a little bit of more detail on the request in regards to be able to alternate the colors. And so what we've done is, we essentially have three different size of townhome buildings. There's a five unit, a six unit, and then I think it's a seven or an eight unit. And so we have provided two different versions of each of those inside of our submittal, and that is, let me get back to a master plan. We've named these A and B. And so, if you see inside of our package there that that one would be, say, a 6A, and that would be a 6B. So, they're not side by, they're never, the same building, the same look is never side by side. And then, the only thing that we've really asked for is we're going to utilize the design as it's shown, but this building may want the white brick on some of the, or this unit may want the white brick on some of the buildings. This one may want the, the brown or the red brick. And so, we're just saying, as these come in, we want the flexibility to be able to move the colors around, so we can still provide that variety, but the design itself would be set.
So, are you saying you're going to let the unit owner choose the color?
So, I think actually we will.
Mike Burton, Toll Brothers, thank you. So, what we will do is work with our architects to lay out the building colors and pre-spec which colors go on which elevation. There are seven separate elevations in the community for these townhomes, and there are six proposed color schemes giving you 42 different variety of differentiation through, through each unit or the proposed units.
So, as we, as we go to start master plan, exactly which ones we're going to do where, we would choose those colors. We would coordinate that with Margaret Ann or staff in general. And I assume if we, if there's something we can't agree on, we'll be back before you, but I'm sure that we'll come to an agreement.
And just always keeping with that you're not going to have two of the same side by side.
That's exactly right. And I think that's the whole purpose behind wanting that flexibility. Everything else is very consistent with the PRD, from the access to the amenities, to the landscaping. All that's very consistent, very attractive development, I think. The only thing we're kind of outstanding is the artwork, and that's just, I'm trying to decide what pose I'm going in to get modeled after there.
I like the, the boards. We can actually pick them up and pass them around.
I like that they didn't show up with pieces in the floor, so.
Very nice. Thank you. Do you have, are you going on to like the single-family too, as far as?
So, the, so I think the way that, I think the single-family is permitted a little differently in that because it's single-family, it's simply just a building permit and is not purviewed to the design review. Am I saying that right, Margaret Ann? Yeah, I think that's similar to what we saw at Clary Park.
All planned developments that have single-family detached homes are reviewed by our planning staff when a building permit application is submitted, so that house plans and application come in together, and our planning staff review those. Townhomes are a little bit different of an animal for us because it's residential units, but the construction has like a site or construction, so it's almost like a hybrid of commercial and residential, so it's a little different.
But they, they would be bound by whatever the plan states that the minimum square feet of the single-family dwelling would be, that sort of thing, right? They can't just?
They are bound by those.
Okay.
Did have them update the information on the site data table to make sure to call it out when, for both the single-family attached and detached townhomes and houses.
And it's a general kind of same look and feel, so it feels like still part of the same community?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Yes.
Very nice.
So, you said that this was for phase one. Is phase two going to be the same, or is it going to differ?
It, it will be the same. And I, these really, I think, represent everything across it, because we've got some, seven units in phase two, and then some, some fives and some sixes inside of phase two. So, I think we'll use these same elevations throughout the project.
Okay. That was, I wanted to make sure we were right.
Yes, sir. No, we're not trying to change. We spend a lot of time with Margaret Ann. We want to use what we ended up with.
Okay.
I think it looks good. Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Anything else you need to tell us about, Mr. Taylor?
No, ma'am. Just appreciate a positive vote.
There are no more comments or questions. I'll make a motion that we approve subject to all staff comments.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we are moving on to Platts and Plans. First item we have there is the West Lawn Commercial Lot 4, MMC at West Lawn Phase 2. It's a site plan review of 29,780 square foot medical office building located on 8.5 acres, Zoned PUD, located along Shores Road. Veterans Medical Properties is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you. Our first item under Platts and Plans section of our agenda is for you to consider a site plan for property located within the West Lawn PUD Plan Unit Development. This, the West Lawn PUD did commit to meeting the GDO standards, and so you probably recall reviewing recent sites. For example, the Ascension St. Thomas has a, has a microhospital adjacent to the property, or here, sorry. And then, there is TOA. And then, this site actually has a Murphysboro Medical Clinic under construction. So, this site actually will have two buildings on one lot of record, and it's being designed as one lot. The site has not been designed to be divided in the future, subdivided in the future, so it will need to continue to be one lot of record, although they could probably condo the Platts. In the West Lawn PUD, they are required to meet the Gateway standards, but they're not required to go through the Gateway process. So, that means two meetings at Planning Commission, initial design review and final design review. Both of those are condensed into one meeting, and that meeting is today. And so, they are presenting their item to you today for review. As I mentioned, it is for a second building on this lot, and this building is just under 30,000 square feet. It is a two-story structure. This is not a MMC building. Yeah, I think it is, it's a medical office building, and they'll probably be compatible tenants, but it's going to be a building, I think, owned by MMC, but leased to other types of medical offices. The other buildings in the, just in the vicinity are all two to three stories, and so I think that the height of this building is fairly consistent. The West Lawn PUD was amended to allow medical uses here. Previously, it was townhomes that were a use permitted. When Ascension St. Thomas wanted to put a microhospital on the site, they went through the rezoning process and amended this plan development to allow medical uses, medical office buildings, hospitals as uses that are allowed. The area that this is on, this lot, actually, in the program book, there's two sub-areas, and it's within two sub-areas, and the difference is heights. So, the buildings that are closer to Veterans Parkway can be taller, and those closer to Birch Tree, formerly known as Shores, are shorter. And so, this does comply with the height requirements of the areas C4 and There's some streetscape elements that are required in the West Lawn Plan Development, and they're accommodating the construction of those really with the MMC. So, currently, the building that's under construction is responsible for installing that buffer, the buffer and berm that you see along Birch Tree Drive, and a lot of the streetscape improvements along the relocated Shores Road. The, I shared with the design team the standards that we have in our Murphysboro Design Guidelines and in the Gateway Design Overlay District, and made some comments regarding their site. Now, I'm going to pass around a couple of just printouts because sometimes it's easier to have a printout. The first page is the version of plans that the comment set, set you have accompanied, and they made some tweaks based on some of my comments, and that's the second page. So, front and back is the old one of the first page. The front and back of the second one is possible revision. So, some of the elements that I shared with the design team are that in the Gateway, these buildings need to be brick, stone, and rock buildings. Materials such as glazed curtain wall or EPHIS can be used modestly, but not, should not be considered a part of the principal facade. And so, some of my suggestions were to reduce the metal that was along the roof of the building, and I think in both versions of this, they've done that. You can see here that this is metal. I also suggested replacing the metal panels between the windows with a brick or stone. And then, I also advised that they include the 24-inch brick or stone base along the building, which Planning Commission's been consistently requiring for all buildings. And so, those are some of the elements that, some of the comments that I provided regarding the architecture. So, if you look at these two versions, really the biggest difference, I think, is that they added that 24-inch stone base that I requested. I think they'd like for you to consider not requiring that stone base, but I wanted to be consistent in, in sharing with them what Planning Commission for years have required the other buildings to do. And so, that's what, what you have before you, those two versions. I also wanted them to be able to provide some information on the rooftop units. When Ascension St. Thomas came through with the microhospital, again, you had them put the base in where it was missing, but also advised that they increase the height of the parapet so that they weren't relying solely on a mechanical screen. They screened everything on the roof. The architect did provide a sightline study to show the roof equipment, and I think that they'll be able to talk to that a little bit more. But I just did want to bring those three things up to you for your consideration, and just to let you know that I did share those with the design team. And then, one of the design, I'm going to pass the material board around as well, but one of the criteria of the design guidelines that, is that when you have multiple buildings on a campus, that you have common theme. And so, for your convenience, I brought an illustration of the other building that's under construction on the lot, so that you can see that when you look at the design of this building, the materials. Let me turn my page real quick. Sorry. I asked them to explain how they are connecting the buildings. And so, the architect's response indicated that this building utilizes a similar range of brown brick and tan stone as this building, the proposed building, and I'll pass those around. As the Planning Commission, they'd like to request you to consider that as determining whether that common design element has been incorporated. One of the other elements that we shared was that the facades can't be long blank facades, and there needs to be variation and interest in the roof line. That's one of the elements in the Gateway that also is in the design guidelines. And so, the architect's response is that they are having a 12-inch brick protrusion from the metal, metal panels, and that they think that that would like to be something that you'd consider to qualify for having that variation. Want to pass this to the?
So, Margaret Ann, I'm struggling to find a difference between these two versions.
Maybe while you're up here, you can kind of show it, what might be different. I can't find anything.
And it increased it to brick and stone, or stone, that's stone.
Which one?
That's black. Yeah, they had a metal, metal.
You just can't tell.
That's shorter and it's, and it's metal. This is taller, 24-inch than our minimum, and it's stone.
Okay.
I thought this looked gray and one looked like?
This is gray and that is white.
Oh, but that, is there anything else different in the rest of these?
I think that they, they've left the metal between the windows as metal, and the brick protrusion stayed the same. I'll have the architect come up and talk about them.
Ah, there we go. First thing fall off.
I think, I think they need to go to the school of material board construction that the previous one went to.
Mr. Blomley, that's a sensitive subject. I would appreciate your training, the way materials are adhered.
This one's heavier.
That glass fell off.
That glass is hard.
And so, those are the elements I wanted to bring up. If there was something else you'd want me to discuss or walk you through the plan before they come up to provide additional information, I'll be glad to do that.
24 to 18, 24.
So, Ms. Green, the 24-inch base, now that I found it, and then you have three things that you mainly want us to weigh in on.
The base has been added. I think they'd like you to consider not requiring it. But I asked for them to show it since it's been a, a thing for years that has been pretty consistently asked in this development and in the Gateway. So, the 24-inch, may it be stone or brick base, and this one's stone. The predominantly brick building, do those panels between the windows, can they be metal, remain metal as shown, or do they need to be a brick or stone? And then, with the roof line, is there variation in the roof line? Are you comfortable with the metal at the top defining it and the screening of the equipment on the roof?
And can we tell if the screening on the roof, does it actually screen the equipment? I mean, I see the screen around it, but does that hide it from, from the view?
The architect indicates that it will. I think my, what I'm suggesting is you'll be looking at the screen. Are you comfortable looking at that amount of screen, or would you like to see less screen? I think it's common in medical buildings to use metal screens on the roof, but this is, and I'm not sure because the height's not, not quite labeled, but this is architect's, it's kind of hard to read, perspective views to show that that, the metal will screen it from particular distances.
So, is the, this site diagram, if I'm looking at it right, it's like if you're at wherever this flag point is, you're not going to see the metal screen anyway, because the parapet, as you look up, the parapet wall will block. If that dotted line means anything, the parapet wall is going to block the vision to the screen in the first place.
I think that the parapet wall will not block
Okay.
You, the screen of all of them. It will in some locations, yes. But one of the criteria in Gateway, of course, is four-sided architecture, and that all four sides need to meet the standard. And so, the rooftop screen will be visible in some places.
Okay.
Depending on where you measure it, it will not.
Right, right.
Well, I, I don't think we can, if we're going to require the, when they're outside the Gateway, and one of the things they commit to is the Gateway Design Guidelines, and I think that they need to stick to the Gateway Design Guidelines. I don't, I don't think we can start, you know, unless we're going to come up with a new, you know, something different for outside the Gateway, we're going to allow people to do this. You know, so far, everybody else, I guess, that's been outside the Gateway, they still have to stick to the Gateway Design Guidelines if that's what they commit to.
Right. Is there some reason that they should not have to comply with the?
I don't see a reason. I, when the first, like, I specifically remember Ascension St. Thomas because I was in Key West and getting texts from Ms. Kerr, who was handling the application for me, and she was asking about the base of building. And at that meeting, I think even they asked, do you think that the standard's appropriate to be in West Lawn, which is not Gateway but committed to the standards, and you made Ascension change it and add that base? So, because of that, I feel like it is just consistency with making sure they do the same here. I get that there's a different, they're really wanting a more modern aesthetic, but I just try to stick with what I know you've specifically asked in the past, and so I don't know why there wouldn't be.
My thought would be we do need to stick with the four- My thought would be we do need to stick with the four-sided architecture. We need to stick with the 24-foot, not 24-foot.
Yeah.
24-inch stone base.
Rob and Enoch are the design team. I think they'd like to just share some, some more information.
Okay.
Thanks, Margaret Ann. Enoch Gerald with Hudson Steel Engineering. Mr. Rob McKelvey's the architect. Also, we have Mr. Joey P., who's the CEO, and Ms. Denise Phelan, the COO of Mercer Medical Clinic. I won't talk much about the site. I mean, there are two buildings, and one under construction, y'all probably seen it, 75,000 square feet, two-three story, that's, that's the MMC branded, you know, just like, similar to the building on Garrison and the Sheville Highway is what's under construction right now. And Rob did the architecture for, for that building as well. And then this building is, is a leased building that they own. They will have an MMC Now Clinic in that, which, you know, they have several of those around town. The Walking Clinic's been pretty successful, so it's a different, you know, it's not going to be fully staffed by their physicians. It'll be leased to complimentary services they have. So I won't talk much more about the site unless you have questions about the site. I'm the outdoor guy, the outdoor engineer, talk about that. But it sounds like most of the questions are related to the architecture. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rob McKelvey to discuss the architecture of the building.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Rob McKelvey, the architect, working with the team. Let's see if I can figure this out here. I guess first, just to answer regarding screening, our primary concern with the screening was veterans. That's, this building is very visible from veterans. And so you can see on that, the top screen section diagram, that indicates a cut from veterans. So that's why we have a screen wall up there, is primarily this, the views that you would get from veterans, we didn't want to be able to see any of the rooftop units up there. Obviously, the closer you get to the building, like the, I forget the name of the street, but what used to be Shores, where there's residential, you know, that, that's real close to the building. So if you're on that street, you're not even going to see the screen wall, because it's so close to the building. But in order to maintain the integrity of the screen wall around all four sides, we've included that. So that, just to kind of address that item for you all. Regarding brick and stone, the updated elevations that you guys have do comply?
I have the updated one. There you go. Wanted you to be able to have that, sorry. There you go. That's the, that's the new one.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I had a different.
Here we go. So the, per Margaret Ann's comments, we did make some adjustments to the elevations. One of those was the, the 24-inch base that we discussed prior. But the other one was the reduction of the storefront. So there was some confusion on our end as to is storefront secondary material or is it not? And so Margaret Ann explained that to us. And so what we've done is, on all the brick elements that you see there, the storefront that is inside that brick element, we've actually reduced that storefront square footage and increased the brick square footage and the stone square footage. So now, for the entire elevation, we are at 52% brick and stone, which would comply with the Gateway District Overlay requirements. So, and in terms of the undulations and whatnot, my understanding in reading the gateway, it talks about variation in the elevations or variation in the roof line. There, the word "or" in there. And so what we've done is, if you look at, it's a real basic wall section on the left-hand side. What we've done is we've played with the depth of the elevation. So you're going to get a lot of shade and shadow on this elevation. The brick elements are 12 inches out from the main wall. And then where the storefront is, I don't know if I can tap on this. Right down through here, that is set back 12 inches. So you're going to get some really good shade and shadow as the sun hits the elevation, so you're going to get some variation on that. And in addition to that, oh, I don't know how you clear that out. There we go. On the elevations themselves, the brick elements are broken into distinct pieces. So you have, they're roughly 23 inches wide, or, excuse me, 23 feet wide. So you have these 23-feet-wide elements broken with the, the vertical metal band in there that is set back 12 inches. But then also within the brick elements, you've got that depth change with the storefront and the metal panel within those brick elements. So you're going to get a lot of depth and shade and shadow change. In addition to that, you know, the, what you can see, you know, this is going to be your, well, this thing kind of, maybe I need to do this lower here. That's going to be your primary visual when you enter the property. So what we've done is played with the roof line on that. We've got a canopy down low for drop-off. The stone elements go taller than the rest of the building, so there's some variation in the parapet height there. But then, within that storefront element, that actually drops down lower than the typical roof line. So kind of playing with that scale a little bit and adding more detail on that elevation as the primary element that people see when they walk or drive into the property. In addition to that, what we've done also in kind of the opposite diagonal corner is done something similar, where we've got a similar stone elements that kind of play with more shade and shadow on the elevation. But then there's also that kind of a soffit-type stone element that goes over that glass piece. So that also provides more depth and the shade and the shadow as the sun hits it on that corner. And then just a drop-off entry canopy in that back corner. So, so we feel like we've done quite a bit to address changes, and it's not one big flat elevation. There's depth changes, material changes, a lot of shade and shadow that's going to be happening on these elevations. So that, you know, to address that comment. The last one was regarding the, the 24-inch base. Once again, it's a little bit of confusion on our part. The general guidelines talk about where there's a large expansive glass, that there's just a minimum of an eight-inch metal base. And the GDO talks about a 24-inch base, but it didn't specifically, doesn't specifically say that that exemption doesn't apply to the GDO. So that's where our initial design did have that 16-inch metal base at that entry area. It's only at the two areas that have a large expansive glass, per that exemption, that's in the general guidelines. So I guess that's a little confusion on our part, but actually, it'd be great if y'all could provide some clarification for that to us as well. But obviously, if, if it is a requirement, we're, we're happy to comply with a 24-inch base, but from an aesthetic standpoint, the design team and the owners did like the look of a 16-inch metal base at that entry area a little better, so.
Can you point that out on your, just so we're clear?
Is there a way I can zoom in on this? The only areas of question, this thing sort of worked here, are just at that front corner, entry, and then back here at the opposite diagonal corner of the building, where those, those two areas that have large expansive glass. And in lieu of eight-inch, we were actually proposing a 16-inch metal base.
But when you say, so the diagonal one, so the one at the bottom, is that a entrance? Didn't look like.
No, it's, it's not an entrance.
Okay.
It's just a design feature on the building.
Okay.
So plan-wise, the two areas in question are here.
Okay.
And then back here.
All right.
Have we been allowing this when we have an entryway with a lot of glass that allow them not to extend the base? You know, I mean, I kind of get, I understand what they're doing.
Sure.
But I also want to try to be consistent with our, her.
I think, I think that consistently you've required the 25, 24-inch masonry base, which is why I asked for it. The design guidelines talk about allowing an eight-inch molyne, which is the one I couldn't remember earlier, for large expanses of glass, and that's for more than 50% of glass. It's talking about for multi-tenant retail buildings, where you take the storefronts out and you replace them with new storefronts when the suites get bigger and smaller. Certainly, I think, having had design guidelines for several years, we could clarify language because I certainly can, and I shared the information, I can understand the confusion, but really, the section he's talking about, it's that large expanses of glass is for storefronts for multi-tenant retail that allow eight-inch molyne, that allow doors to shift and windows to shift, and there's an exemption on either side of a door. I don't, I mean, if you thought that this was a candidate to allow glass going all the way down, I think it's within your ability, but if you're asking about what have you done in the past, you've required the 24-inch brick or stone.
That, that's the clarification I needed. Thank you.
Yeah, because I can remember Home Goods is not going in there because they went on some other space in whatever the name of that development is, on Thompson, yeah. But, you know, we went back and forth because of what you were talking about. They didn't really want to have a base at all, because they didn't know where they're going to put the doors, you know, based upon how they leased the space. But we, we stuck, I mean, we made them put the base in there, you know?
I specifically remember multiple occasions where, in a retail environment, we always go with, you have to put the base in.
So I think then that, pretty much, those are the three items you've already really complied with. The 24-inch base around everywhere, except I understand you'd like it to not go here, but I think it sounds like we're probably still going to lean towards requiring that. I guess the parapet wall, is everybody comfortable with the way that's? Got that added in? And then the windows, I guess, was the other.
Can you clarify that is the only instance where you're driving is on veterans, is when you can see the actual parapet? Not the parapet, but the, see the screening?
So this middle section here is along the new shores. So there will be portions of shores that you would still be able to see a little bit of that screen wall, and then veterans. Once you're kind of in and immediately around the building, the parapet wall itself does the primary screening. But it's only in these distant views that we're primarily concerned for.
And Margaret Ann, how much, how much height are you asking for on the parapet wall?
I think the drawing that we have today is less metal screen reliance than what we had initially. Initially, it was like metal roof, metal screen that looked like another roof. And again, just sort of copied the comments that you made from Ascension St. Thomas about increasing the height of the parapet to reduce the reliance on, on the screen wall. I think the comments then, and what I've heard in the past, is metal screen walls are okay, but we don't want it just to be a metal square on top of a flat roof. And so the variation in the roof line and looking like it integrates into the design is helpful, and seeing some metal screen, I've heard, is acceptable. I just wanted to avoid the scenario where the parapet's here, and then you just have this weird box on top of the parapet. And so I think that you've been able to finagle the roof a little bit more and, and work on reducing the amount of that. So now it's not like this metal box on top of a brick box, which is the awkward thing, but it's kind of integrated into the design, which is better. I think it's better now.
Okay.
I'll voice an opinion. I'm fine with that. I mean, I think that they're trying to compromise with that issue, and if you're looking at it from the road, hopefully you're driving your car and not looking at the building. But I, I'm not trying to be funny. I'm just, unless you're just wa, you know, you're a pedestrian walking and you're looking at it, I get it. But I think, based upon your comments, they've tried to work with you, so I think that I'm okay with that.
So the only real, I think, change we might be asking for here, and because I'm just not positive what the drawing says, is in the entrances, having the 24-inch base.
I think the new drawing has it.
Yeah.
And so the new drawing has it. I just wanted to have a conversation about maybe not having it. I think they're hearing you, and they're okay with what you're saying.
So, yeah, I think we're gonna, we want to see that. Hello, Mr. P. Welcome.
Joey P., CEO of Mercer Royal Medical Clinic. And like Mr. McKelvey said, if, if the 24-inch is in the guidelines, we'll, we'll be glad to comply with it. I can't find it. I, I know it's what y'all have asked these other groups to do, the hospital and others, but I don't see it in the Gateway Design Overlay. So if somebody could just point that out to us, and again, we'll comply. It's just the aesthetics of the building, we think, look better without it. But again, if that's the requirement that the city has set forth in the, in the GDO guidelines, we'll, we'll be glad to comply.
Sounds like it's a, been a requirement that we've consistently required and may not be written in stone in the, in the guidelines, but it's been our consistent.
No unintended.
Ah, yes. Yes, sorry.
I mean, I remember this discussion with rooms to go, same kind of deal. So I'm ready to make a motion unless somebody else's got comments.
So, Margaret Ann, were you asking about the metal on the top of the roof? Not the, not the, I'm talking about the gray piece, the gray banding?
I was asking about the use of metal in the building, since there's no percentage requirement in Gateway, it's not, so it doesn't have to be 51% brick, stone, or rock. But it needs to be a brick, stone, or rock building with only accents of other materials. And I just wanted to make sure, I advise clients, but I want to make sure that I don't substitute my judgment for yours. And so when these, these things can be a judgment call, I would just like to point out and let you opine upon it and give direction. I wanted to make sure you're comfortable with the amount of metal in this building. There's metal panels between the windows.
So that's not even?
And there's metal along the roof line. Now, before it was, what was the, how many?
It was taller, I don't remember what it was.
It was, like, most of the top floor was metal, and they've reduced it now. And so the gateway says you have to have a defined cap, defined base, defined cap. And does that define the cap to you? Usually, we see cornices. We see them in either ephesus or stone, or you see metal coping. So this is a different type of treatment. It's not something that I'm, I see very often. So because it's different, I wanted to engage the conversation and see if you think that it is a defined roof. It looks like they may be anticipating signage. I don't know if signage will be allowed on it or not. That's up to the Building Codes Department. But it's a different type of treatment on a cap for a Gateway building, so that's why I brought it up.
Okay. And then if you could provide for Mr. P. and his group where we're getting the reference to the 24-inch stone base around, you know, if you can find that in there, that'd just be, we'd appreciate that. be, we'd appreciate that. All right, any other questions or comments before Mr. Halliburton goes ahead with his motion?
If you do make a motion, we would appreciate if you make it subject to all staff comments, because there's some site plan comments as well.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve, including the 24-inch base with, around the entire building, leaving the parapet wall as is, leaving the metal piece, I guess it's, at the top of the building, the way it is, and leaving the metal between the windows, I guess between the floors, first and second floor, as is. And subject to all staff comments.
As is in the updated drawing, not the one that was in the packet?
Yeah, I can't tell the difference, but yes.
Okay, we have a motion.
Thank you, Margaret Ann.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much, appreciate you working with us on that. Excited to see the new building. All right. Next, we have the Parkway Place, Lot 12, Phase 2, site plan for two industrial warehouse buildings totaling approximately 90,000 square feet on approximately 7.3 acres, is on PID, located along Logistics Way. Swanson Development LP is the developer, and I understand Ms. Smith is out, so Mr. Blomley will present for us on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, Ms. Smith is out, feeling a little bit under the weather today, so I'll, so I'll sub in for her on this particular site plan. On the screen before you, you can see the big building that's under construction right now, you can see the, it's from earlier this year, what it looked like in the, in the wintertime, as, as well as the construction of Logistics Way, which is the new public street that heads to the southeast off of Richard Reeve Drive in the Parkway Place Development. Phase 1 of Lot 12, you approved the site plan for that earlier this year, and you can see on the, on the aerial photo, Ms. Smith has, has dotted in, or dashed in, Phase 1. That included, I think, about, it's going to be three buildings, I believe they were about 100,000 square feet each, speculative industrial warehouse-type buildings. Swanson Development is now looking to have Phase 2 approved, which would be two additional buildings, one 60,000 square feet and the other one 30,000 square feet for similar type speculative industrial and warehouse uses. These are, these site plans, as Ms. Smith has mentioned to y'all before, are required to, to come to the Planning Commission for approval and can't be reviewed and approved administratively because the PID pattern book requires the Planning Commission to opine on the architecture and to approve the architecture. Ms. Smith has reviewed the, the architecture, and it is in keeping with the, with the approved PID, and I believe the architecture is, is pretty darn close to the, to the first three buildings that were approved earlier this year. Mr. McGuire is nodding his head. As I'm pinch hitting for this, I'm kind of learning a little bit of the application as we go along. So, I'll pull up the site plan, and this shows the, the two buildings, the larger 60,000 square foot building and the, and the smaller 30,000 square foot building, and off of the picture are the, the three larger buildings that were approved as part of Phase 1. The site plan is, is generally in good order. There are still some grading and drainage issues that Mr. Moore of our staff is working out with, with Mr. McGuire, but Mr. Moore has indicated that, that he feels that those issues can be, can be resolved, and that we would ask that, any approval that, that you make this plan subject to, be subject to staff comments. Another thing that I wanted to mention is, it appears that there have been some trees taken out of the preservation area that was a part of the, the PID plan that was required to remain, the trees were required to remain in place in between this portion of the development and the adjacent residential uses to the, to the east, and so one of our comments is that, that they will have to fill in with new, new plantings in conjunction with this, with this portion of the development. They'll need to fill in any gaps that have been, that have been destroyed or damaged in that, in that preservation area. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We would ask for you to approve subject to all staff comments, and Mr. Chris McGuire, the design engineer from Huddleston Steel, is here if you have any questions for him. He's representing the application.
And can I just ask, so when they have the landscaping that came out, and they have to replace that now, do you, is it required to be certain size, certain, you know, is there a little bit of extra size added to what they're having to replace it with to even begin to try to, I mean, I don't think, how do you replace an original tree with something new and say you've, you've replaced it?
I think those are details that we'll have to suss out with, with the design team. I believe the, the pattern book just required the preservation of those, of those trees, and it looks like, based on Ms. Smith's calculations, it was about 125-foot wide area that was required to be preserved, and I think she measured it at about 80 to 85 feet of trees right now, and so it looks like maybe about 30 or 40 feet on the interior of that, of that vegetated area was, was disturbed. I think the, the pattern book didn't require a specific type of buffer, it just required the preservation of those trees, so I think that what we will do is, we'll use Mr. Barbie's expertise on her staff to work with the design team and make sure that the intent of that original zoning plan is met here in that, in that, in that particular, along the, along that particular property line.
Okay.
And I think that, that the design team is, is, has been in contact with Ms. Smith about that and understands what they must do in order to come into compliance.
Okay. Other questions? Yes. Comments? Motions?
Make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then moving on to our new business, to schedule our public hearings, upcoming public hearings, our first item is a zoning application for approximately 4.1 acres located east of Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned from RS15 to PCD, Memorial Plaza. BNN Patel is the applicant. Ms. Green, welcome back.
Thank you very much. My first item of new business is for you to consider the application to rezon property located along Memorial Boulevard. It's just north of the Brent Mead subdivision, you can see Brent Mead Drive and south of Fairfax Drive. Property is currently zoned, RS15, that single-family residential district, and allows lots with 15,000 square feet or more to go on the property. Properties to the south and east are part of the Brent Mead subdivision, and they are also zoned RS15. To the north, our property's own CL, that's local commercial district, it's kind of an older district that's a holdover from some of how it used to regulate, so those, the smaller lines that you can see here are zero lot line homes, which are permitted, were permitted in the CL district, and the two larger parcels, one's a doctor's office and I think one may be a residence. Across Memorial Boulevard are property's own Commercial Highway, CH, and you can see various commercial out parcels and commercial centers or strip malls. There was a single-family house that was located on this property, but it's been demolished. The applicants of this rezoning also own the property, they acquired it sometime in the recent past, the past couple of years, and I think they've been working on a plan for this property for quite some time, and probably, Planning Commission's had some neighbors in Brent Mead reach out to you through the past year and a half, curious if something's been submitted on this property because there's been, I think, some property maintenance and management in addition to the demolition of that house. So today, there is an application before you requesting a public hearing be scheduled, and that is to change the zoning from residential zone to commercial, and so the applicants, we advised them if that was their request to do a plan development as opposed to a bulk zone, so that the Planning Commission and City Council could have some additional, additional opportunity to guide the development or restrict it in ways that bulk zone would not allow it to be restricted, or to talk about the architecture at a zoning level, although we do have design guidelines that come later. There is a right-of-way stub that goes into the property here, so the property does have access to Brent Mead Drive through a public right-of-way, and of course, frontage along Memorial Boulevard, which is a major arterial, and a state highway. The plan that Mr. Taylor's going to go through with you has four buildings, A, B, C, D, and they're all in four phases, with Phase 1 being A, B, C, D. Essentially, the two buildings near Memorial Boulevard are strip centers, and one of the tenants, I think, were pretty, the applicant's pretty confident will go here is his subway, and so, the building on the north side in the plan, and I don't want to still Mr. Taylor's thunder too much, but I just did want to point out that it does have a drive-through to accommodate that subway, and so that's here. The use would restrict the amount of restaurant spaces that could go here based on the definition in our zoning ordinance, no more than 30%. They, the two most permissive buildings are the ones in the front. The building in the middle is kind of an in-between in the building in the back where it's got the residential on both, on the three sides, is the most restricted. They anticipate maybe a daycare, but the use chart also gives some other uses that may be appropriate. The common open space will be developed with the phases. There are no exceptions to the development standards that have been identified or being requested with this plan development, so they're proposing to comply with parking and comply with all the other standards, so no exceptions have been made. The only way to get an exception to our standards is to identify it in the zoning process. The future land use map does, the top one is the one that we, existing, the bottom one is proposed future land use map. You have a public hearing in January to consider adoption of that proposed future land use map. It's something also that City Council considered today, and I think there'll be some conversation coming back to you about that, but both of those plans do recommend a general commercial zone for the property, so the PCD request, as shown in the book, is consistent with the future land use map. We did ask the applicants to hold a public, a neighborhood meeting, and they did that, and it was well attended, as you might imagine, with people very interested in their neighborhood and the effects that it may have in their neighborhood, so I expect that public hearing will have some great attendance and feedback that you'll get from that meeting. I'll invite Mr. Taylor to the lectern to really go through the plan, and if there's anything you'd like to see modified today before the book, he can incorporate that before any public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Green, Matt Taylor of SCC. So, I don't have a real detailed presentation, Margaret Ann did a good job going through that. A few things I'll point out, as we do have one connection to Memorial Boulevard planned here, that lines up with the entrance to, I think this is Big O Tires, I believe is the name, and then we do have an outlet here which will, which will connect into Brent Mead Drive here, which gets you back to a signal here. This drive here was probably, in my opinion, the heaviest focused conversation at our neighborhood meeting. It's been a stub street for a long time, as we hear a lot of times, but I think ourselves as well as staff feel pretty strongly that this is, it's a good idea to get access back to the signal from this piece of property. And so, Ms. Green's right, both of these up front, I think, are very much your neighborhood type retail centers there. My client owns the franchise of Subway across the street, they would like to build, they're currently leasing, they'd like to build their own building, pay rent to themselves instead of somebody else, and would go in that spot right there. We do have formal open space plan that's very centralized to the development, located here. We tried to locate our solid waste here, which is away from the majority of the residential. We've also got some solid waste here. We've also got landscape buffers and fences. One unique thing is that we have proposed to install this fence and all the landscaping on the neighbor's side with our very first phase, and so we've projected Phase 1 to be here, and so all that would get installed with Phase 1, as well as all of this landscaping, and then as the rest of the development occurs, we would install the landscaping on the inside of the fence. And so I think that staff was interested in having those trees start to grow early, similar to what we did, or not we, but Middle Tennessee Electric did on their property next to Berkshire, and so I think it's a good idea. We were just trying to not have any trees inside that fence, they don't get disturbed when we do grade back there, and so we thought that was a good middle ground, worked through that with Mr. Barbie, I think he's in agreement with that. These back two buildings, this building, I think, is much more office-oriented, maybe a, you know, a boutique of some kind that's destination-oriented, and we think this is a good site for a daycare on this building, although we have allowed some more uses in case it's not a daycare, but we've limited the size, and we made those uses very neighborhood-centric so that they're not late hours, not big noise generators, so. And then we tried to create a cohesive architecture palette throughout. I think Ms. Green suggested that we use the Marty and Liz building for some inspiration, so I think our, without copying that, I think our architect tried to, tried to do that, use some pitch roofs where appropriate to make it blend in more with the residential around us as well. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. One thing we did change coming out of the neighborhood meeting was, we took out some uses that the neighbors specifically asked us to take out and clarified some of those further, so, but we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Matt, I got two.
Yes, sir.
Is there a squawk box?
So, there is a squawk box, but it's not, my understanding from my client is, the way that the subway drive-throughs work is, there's not actually a speaker, so I probably shouldn't say a squawk box, there's not actually a speaker, it's just a screen, and I've shared some of those pictures with Ms. Green, because my client originally wanted that on this building. We worked very closely with staff to get that away from the residential, and I think this is a much better spot, in my opinion.
Can you show us the permissible uses that you're speaking of?
Yeah, wish I could.
You can read that, right?
I'll just go through, it's on page 8 of your PDF. We've broken those down by the building, and so as it gets further back into the building, we've restricted those more heavily, and so really, the ones on the front are more retail-oriented, so things like.
Matt, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. If Cable Department could put up my screen, I think it, it would be a little bit clearer.
Here we go.
Here we go. I figured it out.
Oh, yeah.
So, this is, this is the front two buildings, and so, you know, things like indoor commercial amusement, I think that's kind of like an escape game or an indoor putt-putt or something along those lines, retail bakery, Booker card shops, dry cleaning, financial services, health club, things that are needing to grab somebody's attention as it goes by. We've allowed a couple of different versions of restaurants in those front two buildings as well. As you go to the middle building, you know, there's still some things that are retail type-oriented, but they don't, you know, they're much more destination type orient, orientation, sorry, like the antique shop. We've limited the size of that to 3,000, not, a lot of those are being built now, but, you know, a beauty or barber shop, a book or card shop, a catering establishment, which isn't necessarily looking for that front door presence, it's mainly employees and they're leaving, a small clothing store, I'm thinking something boutiquey that, you know, higher end. This side of town, I think, has a pretty high net worth compared to most of the rest of Murfreesboro, and so. of Murfreesboro, and so could see a high-end clothing store there. Interior decorator, so very service-oriented. And then the, should be the back, yes, this is the back building, and so again, we've taken those lists and cut out even some more uses there. You know, offices are inside of each one of those, but I think this is very much an office or, I really think it's a daycare spot whenever I look at it, but we did want to leave some flexibility in there.
Who's controlling this, are you, Matthew?
I was.
Can you scroll it down?
I think he's controlling that and I'm controlling this.
Yeah, I don't know what y'all see on your monitor.
Matthew's got it.
Baby pictures of you.
Yeah.
Oh, man, those are cute.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Found what you were looking for.
Yeah. And we have specifically excluded payday lawn cash advance, the vapor smokes shops, we've specifically excluded those from, from the project. I think that was, I think that actually came out of our neighborhood meeting from some of those uses.
Are we looking for a January, or is this February, January? So January...
The 11th.
11th is our date in January.
How many do we say to public hearing for January 11?
Second. Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 0.81 acres located along South Church Street and Highfield Drive. Sam Willard is the applicant. Ms. Rush, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hope everyone's doing fine. Property owner, Mr. Sam Willard, has submitted a petition asking for this property to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro. It is approximately one-half acre in size. The annexation study area does include the public road Highfield Drive for a total of 185 linear feet. It is within the urban growth boundary for the city of Murfreesboro and is adjacent to the city limits, as you can see in the dark gray, along the east property line, South Church Street. Simultaneous with the petition for annexation is a zoning application, which will be the next item on the agenda, and that is for, excuse me, a planned commercial development, PCD zoning. We held a neighborhood meeting, it was conducted by the applicant and Mr. Taylor's representing the applicant, on November the 28th. It was generally well-attended. We had the neighbors from generally this area, this neighborhood is the unincorporated portion of the county. I had come out to speak. No comments were made regarding the annexation. There were comments regarding the zoning, which I'll address in the next agenda item. The purpose of this today is to set this for a public hearing, and staff is recommending that this be set for January the 11th. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Rush before we set a public hearing?
Throw in, I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for January 11th.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the companion zoning application for approximately 0.54 acres located along South Church Street and Highfield Drive to be zoned PCD, South Church Street corner PCD, simultaneous with annexation. Salem Investment Partners is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. Yes, the applicant is Salem Investment Partners, and they are proposing to zone this property concurrent with the annexation to planned commercial district. The purpose of this is to construct it with a small commercial retail building. In the PCD, the uses are very limited. It's a subset of the CF zoning district uses that we have in our zoning ordinance. The property is located at the corner of Highfield and South Church Street. We did take this to the neighborhood meeting, and as I said, the neighbors did come out and they spoke, they had primarily questions about the property, what the uses will be. They had asked for some additional uses to be prohibited, including, I think it was clinics that were related to rehabilitation or alcohol, drug alcohol clinics, pain clinic, and I think vape and cigarette shop was the other one. The site design, I'll show you in the next slide, is generally oriented with parking on the back and the rear. The building is centered in, on the property. It does have 20 percent open space with some formal open space along Highland Drive. There is a type D buffer proposed along the west property line that is a single-family residence, and to the south is a, is a business that's associated with the residence, so the property owner does live there, but also operates a chiropractic massage facility, and she has a gravel parking lot in the front and a sign. So it's a combination of residential and commercial. As we've done with other projects in the past with a small property like a half acre in size, it does lead to lots of opportunities for site design and how do you make it all work with open space and parking and circulation. So as you can see, this building is primarily oriented towards the south property line. The neighbor to the south does have concerns about that. She would like to also have a type D buffer and have the building shifted a little further away from her house. Staff's concern is that we do see that this whole segment along South Church Street is changing over to commercial. Although their houses now, there are several of them that do have commercial uses in them, and some of us may have actually used some of those commercial uses, I know I have. And we foresee this in our, in our proposed future land use map as an area that would go in the future as a commercial types of uses along this segment. Directly across the street to the east is the marketplace at Savannah Ridge, which currently has an Aldi's, and a little bit to the southeast of that is the Walmart Center. And the adjacent zoning and uses to the north, east, and south are the unincorporated, and they are zoned RM, which is their single-family residential. The program book does request two reductions. The one is for the side yard setback, which is to the property line to the south, to allow, rather than a 10-foot setback, five feet in distance. And then the second one is the reduction in the side yard landscape from a buffer D to allow for the five-foot perimeter planting yard as proposed. The other thing that staff was working on with the applicant was to have future connectivity should the property to the south ever develop with a commercial use in the city. The property owner to the south had objected to any kind of opening or future connection at this time, so the applicant has revised the program book to close it off with the landscape buffer. The staff would like to ask the planning commission for some, some feedback and some comments in regards to that in particular. If closing it off with landscaping is, is appropriate as proposed, or, you know, leaving it as an opportunity to be open and maybe closing it off with a fence is something that staff was looking at suggesting.
And we continue to have discussions with the applicant on, on what that connection looks like. I think that, that, you know, creating some kind of, some kind of cross-connectivity instead of each one of those parcels as they redevelop, and we do feel that this is probably the first of several that we'll see through there, having some connectivity to keep as much traffic off of South Church Street as possible as vehicles navigate from one of these parcels to the next if they, if they needed to, they have a chiropractic service and then they needed to go to the urgent care clinic that they're developing, you know, keeping those folks from having to drive on South Church Street, I think, is beneficial. And so in the future, when, when the property to the south, because I think it's probably a matter of not if, but when it redevelops as well, having that cross-connectivity. And I think that the applicants have, have some concerns about what that looks like as well, so I think that's something that we can continue to work on between now and the public hearing with, with the applicant and the design team.
Thanks, Matt. Also, staff is recommending support of the, of the zoning requested for the following reasons. The PCD zoning is compatible with the commercial development that is occurring along this segment of South Church Street and with the commercial development across the street to the east. Protections for the adjacent residential zones are built into the PCD program book. The PCD is intended for a limited list of neighborhood commercial uses and expressly prohibits uses requested by the neighbors, including vape shop, pain clinic, rehab center. The PCD as proposed is consistent with the proposed future land use map for neighborhood commercial land use designation. We are requesting that this be scheduled for a public hearing for January the 11th. Matt Taylor is the representative for the property applicant and can answer any questions. Turn it over to him, he might have something.
Thanks, Mark. Marina. Getting late. It is. Well, the 230 time really screwed me up, so I'm sure it really screwed up our council people, too. So we are not, I did want to say that my client is not objection, is not objecting to the cross-connectivity. I think our only ask is we would like to know what it is so we can kind of force those people to come to the table and agree to maintenance terms, that's it. Like, we just don't want, you know, if the user to the south is really a heavy traffic user, they should be taking care of some more of this maintenance. And I think that's all my client's asking for. You know, they do, Bobby and Jewel do developments across the city, almost all of them have cross-connectivity, so they're not objection, objecting to it, they just want to be able to control that to a certain degree and what that looks like. And, you know, it might be more beneficial to us to have the cross-connectivity in the front, or it might be the back. It just couldn't, going to depend on what that next user is. So we're not objecting to that. We're trying to figure out the best way to word that in the book, I think, is really what that's coming down to, so.
Well, whether it's now or down the line, as if these do continue to develop, we just have, you know, if the second one develops, then we ask for the connection then because everybody's going to want it. I mean, they're going to need it if, if there's multiple developments up and down through here. But, so I, I mean, I would definitely want to see the cross-aisments or cross-connectivity as I'm sure they would, like you said. I mean, they're used to doing that, but I understand the concern about requiring it at this time.
And I would say that the next, whenever the house to the south does develop, we're going to want to talk to them because they're going to have the ability to get an access on to 231, whereas we don't today. We don't meet the separation requirement from Highfield Drive that TDOT requires, and so, but the next lot will. And so I think there's going to be some advantages to both parties that we would want to take advantage of, and I think they will, too. And eventually, if you keep going south, we would get back to the signal at, I call it the liquor planet, Planet Liquor or whatever that is, signal.
Lenford Drive.
Lenford Drive, there you go. Maybe I need to reevaluate my priorities, I don't... So we just want some flexibility. We just don't want somebody to run roughshod over us in the future, that's all.
This building is oriented to Highfield Drive?
No, ma'am, it's actually oriented toward 231, but we also have a door that's oriented toward Highfield because the design guidelines require us to treat frontages...
I'm sorry, yes. And my only other concern was about the five-foot to the south, because if we do it here and then the next one, two, three, or four, you know, we're going to be, we're setting the precedence for allowing a five-foot setback on all of these properties, and I'm not sure, I don't know, that seems like a concern.
So I, what I would say to that is the only exception to that is, the only reason we're asking for an exception there, I think, is because it's zoned residential. If you go to a commercial highway, it's a zero-foot setback. And so typically, along an arterial like this, you would see a lot of commercial highway, and so I don't think it's necessarily outside of the norm from what we would normally see along a corridor like this. Now, are most buildings set at zero? I would say not, but it could be based on our zoning ordinance. So we do have a lot of buildings that are at five feet, I would say, Ms. Jones.
Okay.
Oh, from the landscaping, yeah, and so the landscaping yards have to be five feet as a minimum. Ms. Rush corrected me.
The property to the south is, it was issued a conditional use permit back in 2007 by county, and it's unusual, it's, it's kind of a, kind of a home-based business, but it's also more intense than we would allow in the city for a home-based business. You saw the big parking area in the front of the house, I believe, I've read the conditional use permit materials from the county, I think they're allowed to have one or two employees, I think, that work there as a part of the conditional use permit, so it's, so it's, so it's kind of a, and Ms. Rush did include the, the county conditional use permit in the, in the agenda materials. It's kind of a pseudo-commercial use, pseudo-commercial slash residential use, it's not fully residential, but it's not fully commercial, and it's, so it's, it's zoned residential in the county, but it's got that conditional use permit to have like a full commercial business in this house. And so it was a little bit difficult to figure out how to treat it as it related to, to Mr. Taylor's development.
And what I would say is that in 2007, conditional use permits were the way the county got rezoned. They didn't have a, like a rezoning process. Their new zoning ordinance, which I think came about probably like 2012 timeframe, that you do have a true pud or there's a two or three different versions of commercial. So I think if this was here today, you would, it would have a commercial classification. This was the way things got rezoned in the county. We even had to do them for like residential neighborhoods. It was a little bit odd, that's why it got done away with, honestly.
Can you go back to the previous one?
I think, I think on your screen it's showing my screen, what, what, did you want to see the concept plan?
Yeah, there you go. So my question for you, Matt, is if you were designing this and you owned that lot, would you design this building position the same? Because you're setting the precedent for how the rest of this stuff is going to be done.
So if I, so if I owned this lot, you're saying?
Yeah, if you owned the south lot, too, would you put the building like that?
I think, I think that I would. Without knowing the use down here, I would set it up this way as well, because, for a, for a couple of reasons. We know we want this access point as far from here as possible, and so I'm pretty much dictated on where that access point can be. You know, ideally, my client would have preferred that access point to be up here, but there's not a chance I'm getting that approved, and so I think I would set this up the same way. The building, if I owned the one to the south as well, my building would be a little different shape. I may push it off, I may push it away from the intersection just a little bit more, but I think generally the building would stay about where it's at.
Then you'd re-subdivide and have them both have one big lot.
Well, yeah. Well, and honestly, whenever we first started, she was part of the conversation, but she did not want to give the appropriate time for the rezoning, but she wanted the commercial mon, she wanted the commercial money like it was already rezoned, and so you, you just can't have your cake and eat it, too, in most instances, and so we just had to walk away from her. She, we just could not come to terms with her, unfortunately.
And if you were going to accommodate the 10-foot setback, would you just push the whole design towards the street? Or are you limited?
I think that we're pretty limited on that north side, because we've got to do some formal open space up here. I've already got my drive at a minimum, and so I would have to get creative if I was to do the 10-foot setback there, because I'm also abiding by...
That's what I'm thinking.
A front setback up here as well. Because I've got two fronts, a rear and a side setback for this particular project. Because I've got two fronts, a rear and a side setback for this particular project.
I guess, from your standpoint, Matt, is there a preference to the connectivity in the front or the back?
I think that's something that we'll have to continue to work with, with our transportation team to see what the preference is. My thought is that it's probably in the back to get it further away.
Looks easier in the back.
From the, any driveway coming in off South Church Street, but that's something, we'll continue to work on that in the next few weeks.
There may even be some scenarios where they both get connected.
Yeah.
And that's what I've discussed with Mr. Blomley and Ms. Rush, is that's why we want to just, we don't want to commit to one way or the other. We definitely want something there, but until we know what that next user is, it's hard to say which one's the best.
So what's your concern about the maintenance then?
Well, because if we just dedicate an easement, these people are never responsible for any maintenance across our property, even though they're using, you know, because in order to start turning, doing this movement, they have to come through our site until we get all the way back to Lenford Drive. And so, all we're asking is, we need to be able to get these people to the table to say, look, you're gonna pay maintenance on, whatever maintenance happens on this drive or this. And most of the time, it's based on area. But, you know, if you've got a really high-traffic user here and a really low one here, or vice versa, then it doesn't make sense to do it by area. At least I would use that in negotiating.
I know.
That is our only concern. It's just the unknown.
All right, I've got a question for the setup. Less with this property than the southern, and more with the southern property? If they've got a conditional use permit, which is basically like rezoning when it was done, if they came into the city, they'd have to redevelop the property, which means tearing down the house, redeveloping it totally. But if they lived in the county, they could still use it as a commercial building and keep it like it is, so what is the enticement for them to join, to come into the city, just for them to have to redevelop the property, unless they started acquiring all the other southern properties?
Sewer.
I was gonna say, I could answer that. They, you could, if you look at her site, you know, her backyard is probably septic, and so she's not gonna, she's never gonna maximize her property, and she may be satisfied with what she's doing right now, but it would be the sewer, exactly what I'm.
I understand that, but if, and it may be more for future owners than her, but let's say she's satisfied with where her business is, she would have no enticement to ever go into rezoning until she got rid of whatever business she's in.
Mr. Taylor, did, have you indicated that she has that property for sale?
I don't know if there's a for-sale sign on the front, but I know that my clients were in active negotiations with her, and we just simply couldn't come to terms. Sure you've been there at the time or to this, right?
I think, I think if...
So, it is actively for-sale with a real estate agent.
Any other questions, comments before we set the public hearing?
If not, I'll move that we set a public hearing for January 11th.
Second.
Twenty twenty-three.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next item is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 22.3 acres located along Butler Drive. The city of Murfreesboro Administration Department is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. So the city of Murfreesboro Administration is requesting annexation of the property into the city limits. The property is approximately 22.32 acres in size. It's located along the west side of Butler Drive and north of Joby Jackson. There are no residential structures, although you see it in the aerial, those structures have since been removed since the aerial photos were taken. The study area is located within the Murfreesboro urban growth boundary and is contiguous to the city limits along Butler Drive to the east. Butler Drive in its entire length is within the city limits. Also, sorry, simultaneous with the annexation request, there's also a proposal for zoning the property to heavy industrial. There will be a neighborhood informational meeting scheduled to discuss the annexation and the rezoning. It is currently scheduled for January the 9th at 5:30 PM, and it'll be held at the city of Murfreesboro Fire Station Number Two, which is located on Running Me Drive. Staff is in the process of preparing a plan of services for this annexation, and we are, we will present that to you at the public hearing. We are asking for this item to be scheduled for the January 11th, 2023 Planning Commission hearing. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments, concerns before we schedule the public hearing?
Make a motion we set a public hearing January 11th. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then the companion zoning application for approximately 22.3 acres located along Butler Drive to be zoned heavy industrial simultaneous with annexation. City of Murfreesboro Administration Department is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. As indicated, the subject property is 22.32 acres in size, and it's located along the west side of Butler Drive and north of Joby Jackson. In this general area is a variety of uses and zoning. Directly to the north, those smaller parcels are zoned RM in the county, and some of them, three of them do have single-family residences located on them. The property to the north of that is a childcare center, and then the properties to the north of that are all heavy industrial manufacturing types of uses like Molly and General Mills. The properties to the south are vacant, and those are also in the county. They're currently zoned light industrial in the county. And to the south of Joby Jackson is a lot of area that's zoned general industrial, and it's in the city limits. And the corner parcel, right at the corner of Elum and Joby Jackson, is the Future Buc-E's, which is the commercial convenience, large convenience store and fueling center. The city is planning to develop the site with a variety of silly city facilities. Of these would be materials management and a processing facility. It'd be a storage location for our salt and brine for when we have our snow days. It'd be a location where the city could store that equipment, and that would be able to serve the west side of town much easier from where they are located right now, which takes a much longer distance to travel to the west port of the city. There would also probably be an office, so they have restrooms and a place for the employees to be. So just a variety of city facilities would be included with future development of the site. The current future land use map does identify this as general commercial, and it's surrounded, like I said earlier, by industrial. So the general commercial is really something, is a carryover from the land use map that is not always consistent with really the vision or where things are going in the city. This, as you know, the staff has been working on a proposed update to the future land use map, and this area is proposed to be industrial, heavy industrial as in the other properties in this site. We are asking for this to be scheduled for a public hearing on January the 11th. We are recommending support of this because of the consistency it is with the future land use map and of the zoning of industrial lands in the surrounding area. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, as well as Matthew Blomley, and I think Greg may have had some background information, but he stepped away. But yeah, if you have any questions about the zoning, please let me know. Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions. I'll move for a public hearing for 11th, 2023.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that concludes our new business. Next, we have staff reports and other business.
Yes.
Blomley.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. If any of you have your city disclosure forms, and Jamie and Sean are providing those separately, but if any of the other five of you have your city disclosure forms with you this afternoon, just pass them to me, and I'll make sure that Jennifer Brown in finance gets them. Also, a reminder to complete your state disclosure form online. That goes directly to the state. We don't need to see the state form, but we do need you to turn in the city form. Also, the end of the year is approaching, just a couple of weeks left on our, on the horizon for our, to get our mandated continuing education requirements in. I'll look over the log with Ms. Jacob and send out anybody who is lacking some hours. We'll send an email to you individually to let you know how many hours you need and get some, get some online opportunities for you to get those. But we appreciate, the emails have been rolling in fast and furious to Ms. Jacob over the last few weeks, everybody getting their hours in, so we appreciate that, and that's all I have this afternoon.
And you accept on this financial disclosure a PDF, or you have to have the original?
We can't accept the PDF. If you don't have it with you this afternoon, email me a scanned copy of it, and I can forward that to Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
I tried hard last night to create a piece of other business, but I was not successful.
Okay. So if we have no other business, then we do stand adjourned.